Opening statements. Ms. Carpenter, go ahead.
Thank you. I do want to send condolences out to Ronnie and his family. I'm sorry for his loss of his father. And thank you all for coming here tonight. And thank you to everyone listening live on K-Wolf or watching on pagospulse.com. I could have used this intro time to share my extensive resume and highlight my recent and relevant professional experience, but you can find that information online at carpenter2016.com. So instead, I'd like to use this time to share a personal story to help you understand who I am. I was born in California in 1970 and raised in Albuquerque. My dad was a plumber, and I was the second of four daughters. We didn't have a lot of money growing up, so eating out was a rare treat. When we did eat out, the kids usually had to share what we were allowed to buy on the menu. One time, my dad treated us to chocolate shakes at a local diner. We ordered three shakes, one for my dad and two for the four sisters to share. I was the one who went to pick up the tray of shakes when our number was called, and boy was I surprised when there were four shakes on the tray instead of three. And I couldn't wait to get back to tell my dad and sisters about the mistake and then get to share the extra shake between us. When my dad found out what happened, he said we couldn't keep the extra shake unless we paid for it. He sent me back to stand in line to pay for the extra one. I remember very clearly the look of surprise from the guy at the counter when I told him I was there to pay for that extra shake. That experience was a starting point for me, having the principles of honesty, integrity, and service, and you can expect to see those same principles when I'm county commissioner. I'm very grateful that I've lived here for 23 years surrounded by so many hard-working, community-minded volunteers that inspire me to be a better person. I hold myself and others to high ethical standards, and I have the skills, training, and modern professional experience that this job requires, and I'm excited to start tonight's debate.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Finney?
I think the most important thing that I can bring to this position is my experience. I've got about 40 years of different kind of housing experience. I've run two self-help homeownership programs. I've worked for the Department of Housing and Urban Development. My main reason to run for the county commissioner position is I think this is my opportunity to give back to Pagosa Springs. We've lived here, moved here in 1995, built a house, raised our kids. Our kids are both graduates of Pagosa High School, and I really like this community. And I've had a lot of good experiences where I can, I'm positive, give support to Archuleta County Government, do a good job in helping the county manager, supervising the county manager, but also going far afield, going up to Denver or DC or Cortez where USDA has their office, and find those resources that are available for rural counties that we don't have right now. So it's sort of that commitment to do what needs to be done for Archuleta County, do what needs to be done for the people who live here. And probably the one thing I learned is, and I went to the Naval Academy, and so I have, if you get through plebe year, that's pretty darn good. And I stayed there two years, one month, and 26 days, and I was civilian for three days, and I went to the seminary to study being Catholic priest.
Thank you.
And I tell people I learned my tenacity from the Navy, my worldview from the seminary.
Thank you, Mr. Finney. Now we'll go back to the panel. Diane?
Thank you, Nicole. And thank you too for being here, Natalie, Mr. Finney. I really appreciate you taking the time to give us your thoughts on all of this. My first question to you is about broadband. In a study released in August of 2014, academic researchers proved that high-performance broadband network usage correlates with greater economic growth in rural America. As the internet economy grows, more applications now require higher data transmission rates for commerce and promotion. A small but significant number of households have home businesses covering a wide range of professions, and home businesses are more commonplace in rural areas than urban areas. At the county level, broadband availability can also mean that the county's employers are more competitive with employers in other counties. This would attract both new jobs and potentially new employers. Six years ago, Chattanooga, Tennessee became the first city in the U.S. to be wired by a municipality for a 1-gigabyte internet service. They upped that to 10 gig five years later. In doing so, the city quadrupled its initial investment in economic growth. Today, there are over 450 communities offering some form of publicly-owned internet service. Many of these are in small towns and rural areas where private high-speed access is hard to come by. My question to you is this: As economic growth is imperative to the sustainability of any community, and broadband access is a key economic driver, how would you lead as a commissioner in bringing that access to this county?
Mr. Finney, we'll start with you.
Okay. That's actually one of the points that I've used in my campaign, is we need to get high-speed internet, we need to get the broadband here, because one thing, we do have very much a vacation-oriented economy, a service economy, but we need to strengthen and broaden our economy here. We have people that do work over the internet that need that high-speed broadband program, and what I would do would be to, first of all, find the people that know how to do this, and this young woman probably knows more than I do. But we need to get it figured out, we need to invest in it, if that's what needs to be done. We could take a look at what's been done in the other places you just mentioned and see how we can do that, because the people who telecommute are bringing really good money into this town. We don't have to wait for somebody to be 60 or 70 and retire in Pagosa to bring the money stream. We can actually support entrepreneurs who want to do their business over the broadband. And I think that's something I would do as commissioner, follow those different leads, and maybe go up to Denver and figure out if there's a grant for our rural county situation, and work closely with the town of Pagosa Springs, and get this thing to work effectively.
Ms. Carpenter?
I think the town and county both agreed with you because they've made it their priority, one of their four priorities that they're already working on. And I do know that there's already a task force in place. My previous supervisor at Pirelli was the previous owner of Brainstorm Internet in Durango, and he, along with our network administrator at Pirelli, joined the task force to go and find out what had been happening and what was going on. Skyworks is already working with other governments in Cortez and Durango to wire their downtown, and I think in Durango, they've completed the project where they've successfully wired downtown so there's free internet if you're in downtown Durango for everybody. And I'm excited that our town and county both are working together to realize that it is a priority for people to have this high-speed access. Just this morning, we had a meeting at Pirelli, and we had to upload it for our AU and UK offices, and it was a 300-megabyte file. And at home, I would have to start the upload, walk away, and maybe at lunchtime come back and check and see where it was at. Well, it took about 45 minutes, because the building we were at at Pirelli is wired for high speed. That's the type of thing, though, that everyone in Pagosa Springs should be able to have, and not just Pagosa Springs. Skyworks is working on ways that they have a 4G internet service that can go through trees and structures, so as opposed to the limit they have now where it's only line of sight from these Skyworks wireless towers, you can actually get that signal in homes in places that don't currently have internet, which means places in Arbel East, Cromo, Way Out Page Road, all these places that currently have very spotty, if any, internet access will be able to get it. So I, for one, would definitely work on that priority with the town and county to make sure there are ways we're getting that funded and looking for partnerships to make that happen.
Just to follow up on that, do you, either of you guys, support a public-private partnership in bringing a gigabyte of service to all residents? And if so, how would that look like? Mr. Finney?
Well, I think we'd have to figure out which way to structure it, but definitely that's the way, that's the way to make things work, because Uncle Sam or Uncle Archuleta County cannot pay for everything. But there are ways we could work with local businesses, with local entrepreneurs, and also with the state and federal government to find a way to finance and make this thing work. And I think this is a really, really good opportunity for Archuleta County.
Ms. Carpenter?
Definitely, that is, I believe, how they're doing it in Cortez and Durango right now. They're working with companies that already have the infrastructure instead of trying to recreate something on their own. I don't know the details of how the financial partnership works. I haven't gone to those meetings. I'd be interested to find out, but I would definitely look into something like that. Why reinvent the wheel if there's companies already out there doing what we need?
Okay. Thank you. We'll go back to the panel. And now we're going to start back over with the questions that were asked on District 1.
Do you want to start?
No.
Go down the line, just for the heck of it?
Sure. Let's go for it. Phil?
Okay. So we did ask this question of the previous candidates, and you'll hear some of the same questions that we asked them. This question doesn't, isn't what you think it is when I give you the introduction, so just please listen to the actual question. "In May of 2015, the BOCC gathered a committee of prominent citizens to give input on the proposed courthouse expansion. During the second meeting of that committee, a number of committee members asked the county staff for clarification of the total budget that the county had available for the expansion. The staff responded that the committee's charge was not related to the cost of the expansion, but merely to the location of a new facility. After that second meeting, the committee was disbanded and not allowed to give any further input. A year later, the cost of the Justice Center on Hot Springs Boulevard was estimated by the consultants at approximately $28 million. A few months later, Commissioner Whiting made a claim that even if the county used most of its unassigned savings and maxed out the county's legally-allowed debt limit, the maximum funding available would be about $16 million." The question is, please share your sense of the proper role of an appointed Citizens Committee if the BOCC is proposing to max out the county's debt limit and spend most of its available savings on a new county facility. What's the role, the proper role, of an appointed Citizens Committee?
To me? We'll go ahead and start with Ms. Carpenter.
I had no idea that there was even a Justice Center Citizens Committee until at the meeting when the commissioners voted to approve that. JR Ford got up and spoke and said he was on that committee. They had recommendations, they had more ideas, and they asked the commissioners why it was disbanded. That was the first I'd even heard of it. As far as the role of these, they have no actual, I believe, jurisdiction in government, same as the planning committee. They can offer guidance to the commissioners in what they want to decide, but there are, I think, the goal of having those is to get people that are experts or at least have some outside opinions rather than just the three commissioners to bring an outside input and try to determine what a solution would be. And I would think, I know I, as commissioner, if I'm taking the time to make sure that there is a commission, I would take the time to listen to those findings and make sure the public knows what those findings are. So I feel bad for JR Ford and all the rest of the citizens that put all that time into that committee only to find that it really wasn't paid attention to. And I think the role of, the role of the committee, and to answer your question, should be to provide outside perspective and guidance to the commissioners, and I would expect that the commissioners, if they're going to form a committee like that, would have the obligation to listen.
Mr. Finney?
I think that's the key issue. If you have a committee and you pull in some people who are knowledgeable from the community, JR Ford and other people, you need to listen to them. You don't, you don't have the committee have two meetings, then disband the committee. The other thing is, the county planning department was not involved as far as, you know, they had a little bit of input, but then the thing sort of moved on to the commissioner level. So we really need to take a look at our ability and the structures we have within Archuleta County. How are we going to come up with a decent plan? How are we going to utilize the people in the county who know how things work or have some different ideas which may help us in the long run? We need to be open to all that. And as commissioner, I would listen to what other people have to say. In fact, I'd ask questions. I've done a fair amount of walking around, talking to the voters, and I ask them, you know, what, what's the most important thing for you? It's not what's the most important thing for me, it's what do the people need? And what's really amazing is when I talk to people, they, they say, well, things are pretty good. And then I say, well, what about affordable housing? They say, oh, yeah, I've got to work on that. What about daycare? Oh, need that. So it's interesting, you can listen to what people have to say, you can also bring up issues, and then they will tell you whether or not they think it's important above and beyond the roads.
Thank you, Mr. Finney. Back to the panel. Kristi?
Yep. Thank you for being here, Ray and Natalie. There are countless stories of people losing their rental and not being able to find a place to live. As the Help Wanted section gets longer, the rental section gets shorter, and those who can't find adequate shelter are forced to leave our community. In the free market system, there are greater financial gains in selling expensive housing and flipping short-term rentals than in building an affordable housing and leasing long-term rental units. Therefore, what is the role of county government in dealing with the affordable housing shortage?
Mr. Finney, we'll start with you.
This actually is the right-up-my-alley kind of deal. I think we really need to look at what needs to happen and encourage local builders to build. I've been to quite a few meetings where, you know, you just discuss the different housing needs, and then somebody's going to say, well, we can apply to USDA or to Colorado Housing Finance Authority or Department of Housing and Urban Development for a 60-unit project. Well, 60-unit projects, which would be rentals, they probably take three years and you may or may not get it. The thing I would like to do is be more supportive to our local builders who build, who can build duplexes, fourplexes, eight-unit projects. There's a project that some local builders want to do down by the high school, which I think is an excellent idea. They've already got some land lined up for that. They're working with the school board to try to get some other land. And we, we really need to develop affordable housing. The other thing is, on this task force, you know, that several of us have been going to, we need to build up downtown, because downtown's got the infrastructure. You know, we do have the water, we do have the sewer, we do have the people, and that would reduce the amount of commuting that has to happen. So those are some pieces to the puzzle that we need to address. Homeownership's a big deal. I ran the Affordable Housing Program called Colorado Housing, Inc. for the first eight years. We've got, we built 140 homes, and over half of those homes were here in Archuleta County. And I am proud to say we have a proud homeowner who's done a great job keeping, keeping up her home. And we've had a lot of people that built the house and are still in it, and that's the important piece of the puzzle. We have to look at the rental situation, we have to look at homeownership, we have to go out and find the money, whether it's HUD or USDA, and it's a matter of making a whole bunch of phone calls, following up on a bunch of leads, talking to people. You know, I've kept track of, of all my leads.
You're on time, right?
And I'm still, my time's up. Still involved.
Okay. Ms. Carpenter?
As Ray mentioned, I did build my home in 1999, 2000 through Colorado Housing, which was an affordable self-help program where six people got in a group and built our own homes. And it was very doable at the time because the land prices were very low and construction prices were very low. I think in the highest house in our group, that was 1,200 square feet, was $87,000. You can't do that now. The last, I ended up, after I moved into my home, the organization ended up, kind of fell apart. I joined the board, I ended up becoming board president, and we continued to build homes, but we could not build a home for less than $150,000. And for somebody making $12 to $15 an hour, you can't afford $150,000 mortgage. It's too much of your income. So one of the things that we did back then was work with local governments on impact fees in ways that, as Ray said, if we're going to encourage people to build, how can we have them build it in such a low way that the builder's still making a profit and the homeowner can get a home for a decent price? Colorado Housing as a nonprofit is not, it's not around anymore, but there is parent organizations and money available through USDA Rural Development that you can still get funding to build homes. One of my girlfriends about five years ago built a home through funds that she got. She got a private builder, she got a USDA loan, she's subsidized by the USDA. There is still money from Rural Development to build homes. One of the things I do want to say is going to these Affordable Housing Task Forces. I'm very disappointed that those task forces have not gone around to see what has already been done. Julie Simmons was one of the executive directors of Colorado Housing for many years, built relationships all, counties all around us, and nobody bothered to go and ask her what had already been done, what can we try, what worked and what didn't.
Thank you. Both of you guys gave some long-term solutions to the housing crisis. If you could succinctly follow up with one, one solution you would offer for someone needing a house within six months? We'll start with Ms. Carpenter.
I would encourage them to call some of these housing organizations locally. Sadly, our Affordable Housing Authority, it's not, it's not the Affordable, our Archuleta County Housing Authority, I don't believe there's anybody managing it right now, but even in Durango, Durango, these help programs for affordable housing, they do serve Archuleta County, and by their grant funding are required to serve residents in Archuleta County. So I would encourage them to reach out to that immediately. And one of the things I'd like to do is make sure our county website has these resources available to people looking for homes, not just being able to go to an online site to try to find a rental, but actually give them real solutions for a long-term housing solution.
Mr. Finney?
Yeah, the Archuleta, the Housing Authority of Archuleta County does exist. John Egan, who was here earlier this evening, is the chairperson, they do have staff. I think we're in a real bind on, on the short haul, on the six-month, but I, again, I would go back to small developers who could do two units, four units, something like that, where, and also, there is a program called Section 8 existing where you can actually get federal subsidies to help pay rent for low-income families. But if we want to increase our housing stock, besides trying to find some kind of a federal or USDA grant to build, we really need to encourage the developers to build duplexes, fourplexes, the project over by the high school, and that, that I think is the most important thing. There's, you know, we can solve some of our problems locally, and we need to, we need to figure out how to do that.
Ms. Carpenter?
I did, I did want to add to that. One of the things, emergency housing for people that have moved here, and in the summer you can live in your car in the forest and it works, but it doesn't work very well in the winters. And the Affordable Housing Task Force has talked about working with local hotels for at least getting people into rooms for the winter. And I think the point person for that, the best person to talk to if somebody wanted to reach out would be Clifford Lucera, our current commissioner in District 2. He sits on the Affordable Housing Task Force and would have more information about what's happening with that.
Thank you. Back to the panel. Kristi?
Okay. "At both Seeds of Learning and Head Start, there is a year-plus waiting list to enroll children in their school. This lack of early childhood education is another inhibiting factor for young families wanting to relocate and thrive in Pagosa Springs. There was subcommittee, there was a subcommittee formed by the county to address this shortage. What will you do to help grow early childcare education in Archuleta County? What are two ideas for addressing the early childcare shortage?"
Ms. Natalie, or Ms. Carpenter, we'll start with you.
I have kids that, my son, I have a son who's now 22, and he went to Head Start, and I was the parent liaison on that board and was involved with that back in the 90s. And then my two daughters who are here tonight are both Seeds of Learning participants, graduates, I guess I'd say, they went to that, so, and I've been involved with fundraising for both. I was just at the, the Board of County Commissioners meeting where they awarded grant funding to the nonprofits who asked for help, and I was very glad to see that the county is using some of our taxpayer money to help somebody like Seeds of Learning, which is an accredited daycare preschool, I don't want to say daycare, it's a preschool education program. And to me, that's one of the best ways the county can use to support it. As far as ideas for how to try to fix this, it goes back to what is the role of government in trying to promote childcare in Archuleta County? You can do a lot through fees if there is somebody interested in coming in to open a daycare, maybe work with them on what fees could we waive to enable them to open a business and get started without as much overhead as what it might take right now with everything that they would need, and also providing resources for them, someplace to turn to. Right now, if you came, I, we have the Community Development Corporation, which I know tries very hard on a small, limited budget, but getting this information of what daycares we have, what services they offer, who's out in the community. My girls are older now, so I'm not as in touch with the younger ones and what is needed, but I am aware of these waiting lists that we do have, and I do know that there's people that have thought about moving here, and they decide they don't want to because there is not a slot of good daycare to put their kids in. So it is impacting our economy by not having quality childcare and not a one-year waiting list.
Mr. Finney?
And I think this, the point of people not wanting, not wanting to move here, not wanting to stay here, I've talked to people at the hospital, you know, people that are doctors or nurses or highly skilled healthcare professionals, they can't find childcare, and they're not staying around. So we've got just a complete spectrum of needs, whether it's for the working person or for the professional person. My wife, Teddy, which some of you know, was the first director for Seeds of Learning. It started out over at the Methodist Church, and then it moved to the Catholic Parish Hall, and then it moved to the little place down by the river that's now been demolished, and eventually Seeds of Learning now is where it is down close to the high school. So that, these are issues that need to be figured out. The Archuleta County Government, the county commissioners, cannot pay for all this, but we definitely can, can talk to, you know, address the issue, see what can be done as far as rules and regulations, but also see what money is available at the state level or at the federal level. You know, we've got a great early childhood operation with Head Start, and Head Start funding still exists. Part of that is going to our U.S. representative, our U.S. senators, and see if we can get a little bit more money out for Head Start. There's a lot of pieces to the puzzle, and we need to address all of those pieces. And then the good part about being a county commissioner is you've got that position where you can go to talk to the people who've got the money and try to dislodge it. I think I just got the time limit.
Political leaders often say they'll solve problems by throwing money at it. What, what two metrics would you specifically use to ensure that this money is used effectively to address the early childcare shortage?
I think part of that is you do have state licensing, we, you've got good oversight for childcare, and part of that's in-home childcare where basically it's, you know, maybe sort of like babysitting but higher level for a lot of places, which is really, really good. And then the, one of the, you know, the bigger operations like Seeds of Learning or like the Head Start Center, you know, those, those places, hopefully, we could expand them. But you do have to have the ability to watch out, to make sure that, you know, the money is wisely spent, or that the daycare providers are doing, doing a good job. And that could be everything from the safety of the kids to the mental stimulation of the kids, so that they learn something during those hours of daycare.
Ms. Carpenter?
I do appreciate that question because, once again, it's taxpayer money that we're giving to other private businesses that are running these daycares, and so why did Seeds of Learning get money from Archuleta County and all the rest of the daycares out there didn't? The criteria the commissioners used when they awarded it was that Seeds of Learning is a nationally-accredited daycare, and I think they're probably also the only one that asked for funding in the cycle that I sat through. So as far as metrics go, I would repeat what Ray said, being in accredited daycare goes a long way. However, it's very, very difficult to become in accredited daycare, and I was involved with Seeds of Learning when Lynn Bridges was going through that process, and it was a, it's a huge win for the county that we have something that high of caliber. So trying to help people get accredited would be one metric if somebody wants to come and ask for money. But I also, once again, think- But I also, once again, think that even if we can't give them financial money in dollars, being able to help them in other ways, whether it's getting them a facility, using buildings that we may already have if we know there's a crisis in daycare, and tracking to make sure that whatever we give away, we are getting something as a county in return, which I think in this case would be, how many slots have we filled with kids that previously were on a waiting list for daycare?
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Finney.
See, the other thing is, and this goes back to how do we pull in resources from outside the county? Seeds of Learning has money from Ann Schutze Foundation, they have money from Bettschler Foundation. These were all things that my wife, Teddy, worked out in the beginning and would have been able to continue. And part of that is we need to really tell the world, tell ourselves, number one, so we act, but also go out to places like Ann Schutze Foundation or Bettschler Foundation that where we can develop, we can support, and we can increase the enthusiasm for good early childhood development.
Thank you. Back to the panel. Bill?
Okay. Thanks for those answers. There is a nearly unanimous outcry from Archuleta County residents that roads should be a top priority for our Board of County Commissioners. The county and local construction industry currently spend a significant premium on gravel by having to import it from outside the county lines. However, this summer, the county denied the Two Rivers gravel pit permit, a mining operation that would have supplied high-quality gravel for the next 25 years at a more attractive price than what we are now paying. This permit was denied unanimously by the commissioners at a public meeting attended primarily by homeowners who would have been affected by the gravel trucks. What is the proper role of the B.O.C.C. to ensure that high-quality gravel is available to our county government and to local contractors? And what would you do personally to ensure the availability of high-quality gravel?
Mr. Finney, you get to go first.
That's really interesting, because the people who lived, you know, south of 160, because many of these gravel trucks basically go from City Market, down Cascade, down to the river to go south. And it was, that was the big concern, was would that increase the amount of gravel trucks on that road? Because right now, the dump trucks and the garbage trucks, everybody's going down, you know, through the area south of 160. And that really bugged the neighbors, and the neighbors, you know, raised a certain amount of question. That'd be a nice way of saying it. I think that if we can look for gravel, I would probably, I would try to look for gravel north of town, so you've got immediate access to Highway 160. If we had to deal with gravel south of town, of which there is good material down there, we'd have to figure out how to increase and enhance the value of Trujillo Road. And I've talked to people that live on Trujillo Road, they don't mind living on a gravel road, they just want to make sure the gravel road's maintained. But if we, if we want to use gravel south of town, then we've got to work on Trujillo Road. We can't just let south of City Market be a free-fire zone, and those people are the ones that said, "We don't want this in our neighborhood." We do, I think the people who lived in Archuleta County longer are more willing to see developments such as that. If we, so my thought, if we really want gravel from south of town, we've got to do a lot of work on Trujillo Road, and that would take a good allocation of county money.
Ms. Carpenter?
When you say that gravel is, it can be locally, gotten locally, less expensive, there's another cost, is it truly less expensive if you're doing such an impact on the roads and the maintenance needed that the money needed to maybe asphalt and keep repaving those roads is so high, it ends up being way more expensive doing in the county? More importantly than that, I think, is not just the roads traveled for these gravel pits, it's the quality of life around what happens when you put in a gravel pit. I was in an interesting, one of my jobs when I was a computer person, I was hired to go up in an airplane and take aerial photographs of a proposed gravel pit that was going in up Highway 160. And it ended up passing, and it got approved. And five or six years later, I'm at one of my other client's house who lives up Fong Gulch Road, and I'm out on his beautiful deck, looking out the back area, Elkar out in the meadow, and you hear this sound. And I said, "What is that sound?" And it was the sound of the gravel pit that goes from 8:00 AM until, I think, 6:00 PM. And it completely, and this was miles down the road, but sound carries, and it really affects everybody in the area. So in addition to just the cost of what the gravel might be, it's, to me, the cost of the community when you put a gravel pit in near where people are living who moved here for the peace and quiet and do have to listen to that sound going the whole time. So I think it's, I think the commissioners and the public spoke on that and made the right choice, and it would be weighing what is the true cost of cheap gravel when you actually do the analysis.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter, I feel like you touched on a fundamental part of this question, which is how will you encourage growth initiatives while also maintaining that style of lifestyle, that style of living?
That is, that's a great question. And for those of you who didn't know, I ran for commissioner in 2008 when Clifford Lucero won the seat. And he's been term-limited after his two, four-year terms, and so I decided I wanted to run again. One of the issues back then, there were bumper stickers all over town, that was "Keep Pagosa Pagosa." And one of the things a lot of us would ask is, what era or what year do you want to keep Pagosa in? Because some of us have been here 60 years, 80 years, I've been here 23 years. There was one traffic light when I moved here in 1993. There's now traffic lights all up and down the hill, it is not the same town. It's not going to be the same town 20 years from now. And so responsible planning, strategic planning, economic development, these are all things I have very recent training in, that I am so excited to get to be in a role as county commissioner and share the knowledge of all the training I've done regionally, even nationally, going to Philadelphia, where we have the father of city planning, and learning how, if you do some strategic planning and look for where you can have areas of growth, it won't impact the people that have chosen to come here already, or the people that want to move here in the future.
Mr. Finney?
I think those are points really well-taken. We need to get this thing figured out, and we need to understand that Archuleta County today is not what it was before, and definitely, we're going to have more growth in the future. Especially if we work on the high-speed internet, we try to get better community services, public services. So that's going to take a lot of planning, a lot of actually feedback from the community. And I think that's a big piece of the puzzle. We have to get the community behind anything we're going to do, and to make it so that people feel like they're part of the solution. And I think that's a big piece that any commissioner, and myself as commissioner, would do. We're going to get that community feedback and figure out how to get everybody on board.
Thank you. And now we're on to the sixth and final question of this debate. Diane?
Thank you. Well, it looks like I get the infrastructure questions, but to follow up from the gravel issue, let's talk about roads. Roads are one of those things that commissioners, over the past several years that I've lived here, they've always used that as an issue to say, "I'm going to get good roads, I'm going to give you good roads." And then it really hasn't happened. It just started to happen in the last couple of years. And the commissioners have made some strategic changes to things to help that happen. However, commissioners are also fond of saying, one quite recently, that people don't wish to have any tax increases. And since that's what it would take to have better roads, then they won't get the roads they want. But in reality, good roads are not just what binds us together as a community, they also serve to show those wishing to move here that this is a progressive and secure place to live. Nothing says prosperity to the outside world like a good road. At the last estimate, however, almost half of our county roads were in critical to poor condition. My question to you is this, what specifically would you propose to do to improve our road maintenance? How would you propose to pay for it? And if you're in favor of metro districts, wouldn't this just add more layers to the government? So how would you create the new revenue, and from where would you reallocate existing revenue to help the road situation in Pagosa?
Ms. Carpenter, we'll start with you.
One of the things I, at the budget meeting that we just had last week, the county commissioners did, there was a state requirement that a county is required to have three months of operating funds in their bank, or they're in violation of a state regulation. And for many, many years, the county did not follow that practice. And so over the past several years, we have worked, the commissioners have worked to build up those resources, so we now do have the money required by state regulations. The problem with that is, over the last several years, because we're using that money to fill our coffers that are required by the state, we haven't necessarily had the money that we could put into roads. Thankfully, I think, with the tax revenue now that has somewhat peaked and they think is going to even out, if we can start now, instead of putting the money into savings and use some of that money on roads, I think that's an immediate thing that the community might see. But one of my biggest things that I would like to immediately do upon being commissioner is, we have a five-year plan that was done in 2011 for roads. And there's a lot of community people that put time and effort into making that happen. But it's buried on the website, it's, I want to say, a couple hundred pages. And it's not easy to see, even though there's a list of all of the roads you can go to and find your road and see how it's rated severe or critical, nobody knows what's happening. And I think I answered this question in The Sun recently, we might have the best plan in the world, but if the community and the public doesn't know what it is, all they're going to think is, we don't have one at all. And so number one, it's getting the community involved to realize, what is the road plan? What is the next road we're going to do? Which one is going to be paved? And how are we allocating those funds? That, to me, is number one, because when you get the community buy-in, then they can maybe see the extent of the problem, and they might realize the only way we can solve this problem is to do some kind of a tax increase, no matter how much we don't want it, that might be the only problem. Or we might look at the situation and say, "Look, things are coming flush, we've got money now, here's the plan, yours is going to be done in 2018, wait two more years and we're going to get to it." And get the public involved in that. And that communication and working both ways with the community is something I really want to bring to the county commissioners' board.
Mr. Finney?
I think that's the other thing that I've been talking about also. We really need to get the community buy-in. We need to have the people say what's going on, and the people understand what's possible and what's not possible. And do you want to spend the money on new shock absorbers and new tires? Or do you want to spend the money on decent roads? And that's what happened to me like three or four years ago, maybe more like five or six years ago now, is the county, in its infinite wisdom, paved a road about a block away from the road that I live on, that has lots and lots of people and lots of traffic. And they paved a road that had almost nobody living on it. And theoretically, it was an arterial connector between Piedra Road and North Pagosa Boulevard. And part of that is, the county staff and the county commissioners need to use a little bit more common sense, get more buy-in on the part of the people, so that something like that doesn't necessarily happen. I'm sure somebody sitting down a road and bridge said, "Well, that's a great place, let's draw the line from this point to that point, and we'll pave it." Well, nobody lives there. And they missed a road that's a school bus route, the whole shoot match, where a whole lot of people live. And it costs a lot of money to maintain, whether it's lay blacktop, or whether it's grade these roads that need to be graded. And I think it's a very good point. The more the people understand what's going on, the more they will probably be willing to let taxes go up some, especially if it was a tax where people knew exactly where the money was going. I think that's the big thing. People say, "I don't want to pay this giant tax bill," because you don't really know where that money's going. If we can explain to the community what's happening, then I think the community will get behind it. And we have to also think, you know, as smart as possible to make this thing work.
Okay. Ms. Carpenter?
I don't think we touched also on your second part of the question about metro districts. I cannot attest to be a very knowledgeable person on exactly how the metro districts work, but I know for a lot of communities, it does help if there is a community that wants to form a metro district and decide they want to pay more taxes so their roads can be improved, that they can do that, and that, I believe, Archuleta County has it as an option, and we already have some of those in place that are working well.
Aspen Springs has a metro district, and it's a real challenge. I actually think the people in Aspen Springs pay more in their tax dollars for the roads than overall Archuleta County. So, you know, the idea of a metro district is good because it brings the communication down to the more local level. But you also have to have the people willing to go through the grief of forming the metro district and the buy-in of all the people that live there.
Okay. Thank you, candidates. Thank you, panel. Once again, thank you all for coming. Tonight's closing remarks. All right, we'll start with Mr. Finney.
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, the audience we have here, but also for all the listeners. Because if you are willing to listen to two hours of ideas on how hopefully we can run the county better, more power to you. I would thank everybody listening to K-Wolf that was able to go through and hear all these different ideas, try to form some opinion. As I've walked around, I've talked to people and said, "If you've got something you need done, or you think's an important issue for Archuleta County, call me. I promise I'll call you back." You know, so I think commissioners have to be very, very open to what needs to be done, willing to listen to community members. And I've told people, if we've got three or four or five people that all of a sudden agree that we've got the same problem, that's obviously more crucial than the one guy who's unhappy with one piece of the road in front of his house. So these are issues we need to be open, we need to be available, we need to be able to listen, and we need to work with our fellow commissioners and with other elected officials within the county, so that we can actually get the job done. You know, what I thought was very interesting is, on this new county building and the jail and all this stuff, that the divisions that are run by the women, they're saying, "We're willing to stay in the old courthouse," because they're, it's sort of the whole sacrificial deal. I think mothers are more willing to sacrifice for their kids. In this case, our women division chiefs, you know, like the appraisers and the, you know, the different places, they're actually willing to stay in the old building, so that the courts and the jail, and if anybody's seen that jail, we need a new jail. But anyhow, that's the real process of being willing to make things happen and being willing to take second place if you have to.
Okay. Ms. Carpenter?
Thanks again for having us here for this debate. One of the first people I told about running for commissioner was my boss at Pirelli, who's here tonight. I told him that if I'm elected, I intend to resign and make the role of county commissioner my full-time job. I apologize for not being able to get out and knock on doors and meet more of you in person during this campaign. Like so many of us, I have a job, kids with different after-school sport pickup times, volunteer commitments, and not enough hours in the day. I've used what time I do have to walk the roads and highways with my sign, stand on street corners, and wave to the diverse people that drive by, and most of them end up waving back, which is one thing I absolutely love about this community. In addition to my 23 years of public service through volunteer work here in this county, I've attended hundreds of hours of community and government meetings in order to stay informed and involved. I don't just talk about the things I want to do, I find the time and means to make it happen, and you can find out the things I've done on my website. My skills and training for grant writing, board governance, strategic planning, financial management, board ethics and communications are strengths I will bring to the role of county commissioner. Through my work as an IT consultant, I've seen the needs of large and small businesses here in the county. Through volunteer work, I've served with seniors, veterans, educators, artists, athletes, parents, nonprofits, and many others in our community. Your vote is an approval to hire one of us to be your county commissioner. And the person you hire should have the experience and training necessary to oversee a modern county using best practices, ethical behavior, and integrity in every action. Please vote for Natalie Carpenter for your District 2 commissioner, and I'll make serving you all my full-time job. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, everyone, and a round of applause to District 2.
Thank you.
So you have all heard five out of the six candidates debate tonight, and I appreciate all of the discussions it spurred and the increased involvement of our community in the local political process. Now the decision is yours. Good night.
Good night, and meet tomorrow. Good night, and see you tomorrow.